Welcome. Thank you for being here on June the 25th on a very warm day. For this, this very important time and appreciate you all. Please make sure that your telephones, anything that makes a sound is turned down or muted. We will appreciate that. Direct all of your thoughts and expressions to the chair. We appreciate and respect your engagement and courtesy to, you know, everyone here. Madam Clerk, would you express where our Mayor Pro Tem is?
Of course. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers pursuant to government code 54953B, this meeting will be included, include a teleconferencing location at Camp Geronimo at 2599 West Weber Creek Road, Payson, Arizona. Mayor Pro Tem Freendal will be attending the meeting business session via teleconferencing under the traditional Brown Act mythology. The public shall have the opportunity to address the city council at this teleconferencing location pursuant to government code section 54954.3. All votes during, at, all during the teleconferencing location pursuant, oh, sorry, teleconferencing session will be conducted by oral roll call vote. The teleconferencing location is accessible to the public and the agenda was posted to the teleconferencing location 72 hours before the meeting.
Madam Clerk, thank you. David, welcome. We see you up there.
Thank you.
Hope that all is well with you and the scouts that you are with. So, thank you for being here and with that, the roll call can show that everyone is in fact here. As we always do, we start with prayer and allegiance to our flag tonight. Reverend Susan Scranton is here, the Pastor of Grace Episcopal Church, and we welcome you. And after she prays, Michael is going to lead us in, in the pledge. So, if you can, please, please stand. Thank you.
Almighty God, Creator and Sustainer of the world and of all life, we give you thanks that in your mercy and grace you have entrusted to us the stewardship of this world and in particular this community of Glendora. We give you thanks for the many gifts of this city of Glendora, for the beauty of the foothills, the wondrous creation, the treasures of trails and streams and vegetation. Give us grace to be careful stewards, especially during this time of high fire danger. We give you thanks for the blessing of good schools, of caring professionals, creative businesses, for the grace of a community given to generous volunteerism and faithful service. Look with compassion upon all who search to strive and be faithful stewards and to make Glendora a healthy and vibrant community. We ask your guidance and blessing for our Mayor Mendel, our city council members, Michael, Karen, Gary and David, who have been called to lead this city in which we live and work and play. Give them grace and courage as they make decisions, both financial and corporate. And we ask your blessings upon all the leaders of the city and all who come here tonight to share their thoughts and concerns, that the words will be spoken with wisdom, compassion and care and faithful discernment, that decisions can be made fairly and honestly and that together we may seek and serve the entire city of Glendora, caring especially for those most vulnerable among us and promoting the well-being of all people. Amen.
Amen. Michael?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you for that inspiring prayer and Michael for leading us in the pledge. Does anybody want to reorder or add to the agenda? Looking at David?
No.
No, no. Thank you. Okay, the agenda will stand. Okay, let's go into public comment period. This is an open time where the public can come and speak on issues for a limited amount of time. The time is up on each of the screens, so please stay within that. Be kind, courteous, and we will attempt to respond to anything that needs to be once this is done. So, we'll open that now. And first public speaker will be Mr. Mark Smith. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening. I've been fair witness to what the destruction has happened in the village. They got it in, you got the bid in with one vote, one person. And it turns out to turn into a hell machine. Thugs took over, outvoted, outstripped, took their marching orders from City Hall. They have made so many mistakes, it has been in the backs of the citizens or taxpayers of Glendora. They've had to endure one debacle after another. And it just depends on how you're looking at it. But there are more empty buildings, suites than ever before. I've been a witness to it for 24 years. I've said things and pointed that out. Now, this body here was warned about fire danger near the Colby Fire. They chose to do nothing. By happenstance and luck, two kids or three kids started a fire. But they were warned. The city sat in their hands and spun in circles. Now, it's terrible what's happened to the village. They desecrated a church like some kind of, this is not a conservative town. They've been grasping at straws, one after another, and it bleeds out of the reserves. Now, secondly on this issue, it's gone like the city has gone top-heavy with management. Remember, we're gonna have to pay these people that they, the city council decided we need, which they really don't need, the retirement. Some have cost them dearly who are working here. Family, children, wives, all behest of the city council to get something done. I've asked for polygraphs, I've asked for polygraphs to be done. I would pay for them. But you see, the honest will say yes, the dishonest who has something to hide will say no, or none at all. And I was laughing so much, I was brought to tears. The state of the city, I've had to endure 24 years. That'd be 24 sessions of lies, misleading comments and pure BS. Ah, but we tried hard. You don't understand. You're gonna have to try harder and give us more money so we can flush it down the toilet. There's no reality. Everything is pre-planned, pre-choreographed, and that's how the cookies roll. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next person up is Reverend Susan Scranton. Susan, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to talk briefly about signs in the town and any possible ramifications of banning signs, both permanent and temporary. Grace Episcopal Church has been in this community for over 100 years. First, we were on Vista Bonita, and now we're on Mountain View. We're smack dab in the middle of a residential city and people don't know where we are. So, we have a sign. It's a directional sign at Foothill and Cullen. And we certainly would like to keep that because it tells people where to go. I looked at other signs that were specifically pointing to an area. I didn't look at the signs that were in front of a church or a business, but there are historic district signs all over Foothill. There's a sign for Finkbiner Park on Bennett just before Wabash. There's welcome to the Glendora Village. There's a big tree signage pointing at Glendora and Colorado. There's a Glen Oles Golf Course with a sign at Grand and Baseline. Centennial Heritage Parks at Glendora and Monaloa. And then there are all kinds of 210 freeway signs on Glendora Avenue. I have been in Glendora quite a long time. I accepted the calling in the summer of 1997. I just accepted the position of Rector of Grace Episcopal Church and I was up at Mammoth for a bit of a vacation before starting a brand-new job. On the last day, I called home and received a message that one of our parishioners, it was Russ Kramer, whom many of you know, was dying in the hospital and would like to see me. That was the end of the message. Well, I'd interviewed, I'd looked around. I knew there was some sort of hospital somewhere. I knew about Arcadia Methodist. I knew about the Huntington, but no other details. And I have to tell you, I am severely directionally challenged. Don't ask me to point north unless I can see the mountains. Well, everything was closed. I knew there was a hospital in town and there was a sign on the freeway, Hospital, Grand Avenue. And there were all kinds of signs up Grand Avenue directing even a directionalist person as to how to find the hospital. So, I just urge that when you consider banning signs, whether they're permanent or temporary, that you really think about the ramifications for all of the businesses and all of the residents here in Glendora. Thank you.
Pastor, thank you. I appreciate that. All right, Joe Cena. Welcome, Joe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff. My name is Joe Cena, President and CEO of the Glendora Chamber of Commerce, and thank for allowing me to speak tonight. I look forward to your discussion later on that has to do with the chamber. Hopefully doing better in the village than, oh, we won't go there. No, 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 everything's, we're good. Tomorrow night, we're gonna celebrate our, our year, our fiscal year with our installation of our new officers with, and then thanking our outgoing board, which most of our board is staying the same, the exception of our Chair, Bill, Bill Rue, who's also the Government Affairs Director for Citrus Valley Association of Realtors. He's led the board this past year, done a great job, really featured legislation, you know, getting in front of that. That's kind of was his mantra for the year, since it's what he does for a liv- living, but, and then we welcome in as Chair Nicole Pierce, who also, who works at America's Christian Credit Union, which you're well aware of that, which Nicole will be a great Chair. And then also, we'll be celebrating the Business Awards, you know, New, New, New Member of the Year, Business of the Year, Nonprofit of the Year, Sustainable Business, and Ambassador of the Year. So, we thank those who will join us tomorrow and we look forward to a little bit of celebration. The chamber is also working on flat flashback, really gonna start after tomorrow, but a lot of stuff going, going on with, with that. And then planning a great fiscal year with a lot of new stuff, even though this year we started a lot of new activities, new types of mixers. I mean, we haven't had this many mixers, I think, since the last 12 years I've worked at the chamber, you know, in one year. You know, I had our staff count them on the calendar, had them double check. I was like, we really had that many? You know, it's just a lot. So, which is good. I mean, that's where, that's one of the things we're here for. So, and then we took part and helped put on the State of the City, which was different than we ever have done before, which that was great. Presentation was great. The video is up on the website and the city's YouTube and city site and everything. So, we had fun, fun with that and we look forward to future years of it. So, thank you very much for your time.
All right, Joe. Thank you and thank you for everything that you did to make the, that event a special one. Those are all of the cards that I have has, does anybody else want to have a chance of public comment period? If you do, now's your time because once it's over, it's over. So, if anybody else out there wants to speak, please feel free to come up, raise your hand, get a card. And all right, well, seeing none and hearing none, I will close our public comment period and thank you for that. I'll bring it back to staff. Michael, anything?
Yes, I have one, one item. I'd like to request to have a second for a resolution for the League California Cities for their upcoming general session they're gonna have here in October. And the, the idea, I'd like to have a discussion at our next council meeting in first part of July. Basically, the topic of the discussion would be to ensure fairness and equal treatment for all government officials in California and to be able to develop a, a resolution that we can submit. We have to have this submitted before August 17th. We can start at any time to, to develop this and to submit this and all it takes is, besides us, it takes five other cities and/or five other council members from another city to make this go through and to be considered by the League.
Okay. Is there a second?
I just want to make sure your request is for a second to have the discussion at the next meeting, not for the actual resolution.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Because we can't discuss it right here.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. Adam, you're okay with that? Okay?
Thank you.
You done? Okay. All right, Karen, anything?
I just was gonna mention that Sunday night was the first concert in the park and Johnny Gary and I were trying to guestimate the crowd, probably at least 400 people out there in the heat. And the answer put on a great performance. So, Sunday night, 6:00 PM, go check out the concerts.
All right, thank you. David, is there anything that you want to share?
The only thing I will share is we are enjoying monsoon, thunderstorms, lightning, and quite a surprise, which probably beats the heat that you're all enjoying. So, I'll take it. Thank you.
All right, David. Thank you. Gary, anything?
I'm guessing you looked over my shoulder and saw my list to decide to leave me to last?
No, actually I didn't, but...
Okay. A, a number of things. First off, I want to start out with the Glendora Rotary Club is gonna be hosting the annual Field of Heroes that we do every year at, over the Fourth of July holiday. And so, this year, the location in the south end of town is gonna be moved to Gladstone Park. It's been at Sunflower for the last six years. So, it's gonna be moved to Gladstone as the Sunflower Campus, the property where we held that was sold. So, it's gonna be more open. It's gonna be easier to gain access to come down and walk through the flags. So, we want to welcome everybody. They're gonna be, the flags are gonna be put up on Wednesday, July 3rd, and they'll come down on Sunday, July 7th. So, you can enjoy them all of that time. The big event, we're going to have an actual ceremony to celebrate the, the, the flags on Saturday, July 6th at 10 o'clock right in front of City Hall. So, please, if you're not doing anything on Saturday morning, I promise it's gonna be cooler. Let's hope I don't have to go back on that. But we will be down there and we have a couple of special guests. We actually have Congresswoman Judy Chu will be joining us to share a few words as well as Supervisor Catherine Barker. So, come down Saturday morning, so, and join us 10 o'clock in the morning. In the meantime, we still need volunteers. So, if you are available to help us install the flags on Wednesday, next Wednesday, you can be at Gladstone Park at 9:00 in the morning, or you can come to City Hall at 5:00. And it doesn't matter what your talents are, we'll put you to work. There's things to do to get everything up and to put all the tags on the flags and so on and so forth. But more importantly, we're in need of volunteers to guard the flags. And so, if you go to our website at fieldofheroes.net, there's a place on there that you can sign up to guard the flags because down at Gladstone, we have to make sure somebody's there to watch them all the time, not just to make sure they don't get vandalized, but also to answer questions for people and to, you know, pass out information and that type of thing. So, looking forward to a great event. In cooperation with Community Services Department, we are also going to be showing the first movie in the park on Friday night, July 5th, and it's going to be at Gladstone Park, right next to where the flag display is. So, and we're gonna be showing Top Gun. So, the, the, the real Top Gun, not the lame one that came out last year. But, but anyway, so Friday, come down, watch the movie. It will start at dusk. We cannot start it any earlier as much as we'd like to because we have to wait for the sun to go down. So, anyway, be there, fieldofheroes.net, come and enjoy. I, I want to share, we, we all attended the Handel's Ice Cream Grand Opening last week. It was a great event. Handel's is a good addition to the, to the shopping center. Right now, we all need as much ice cream as we possibly can. So, we got ice cream here in the village. We got ice cream down in the, in the corner. So, there's plenty. Everybody get out and, and enjoy that. Also, Kathleen is going to be sharing some information that next Monday, we're gonna be having a pre-nomination candidate workshop. So, I'm not gonna steal your thunder, but I think it's important just to hear directly from me, if you haven't heard yet, that I will not be running for reelection this coming November. So, there will be at least one empty seat on the, on the council. So, if you have any interest whatsoever in taking my job, please come next Monday at 6:00 and she'll share some more information on that.
And if they live in your district.
If they live in my district, yeah. Yeah, I've had a few people ask about the district thing. So, and then the last thing on, on a more somber note, for those that know, Chris Perkis passed away a couple of weeks ago. And I'm going to ask that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Chris. We typically reserve that honor for people that actually live in the city of Glendora. And Chris and her husband, they moved away a couple of years ago, but Chris is a Glendoran. She, they, they have a business here in town, lived here, raised her kids here. Chris was a longtime volunteer in Glendora. She was president of the Foothill Presbyterian Hospital Foundation for a number of years. She was also on the board of the Friends Library and was president for, she was on the board for 10 years, president for two years, past Citizen of the Year. So, I would like to ask if we could adjourn the meeting in her honor tonight.
Yes.
That's it.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Gary. I just have a couple of things. I, once again, want to say thank you to Joe and the, the entire team that he has for everything that went into the State of the City. I also want to thank our, our own staff for making that such a wonderful night. Something new, change is, is sometimes good and hard, but I think this was a good thing and hopefully we've struck kind of a new, a new chord there. So, thank you, Joe, for everything that you did. Let me make it very clear, there is, there are no fireworks, legal or illegal or virtual or anything allowed in our city. I'm looking back there at the chief and I think he will give me the thumbs up that there are no fireworks of any kind allowed. And I know there's always the excitement of those, but as many of us experienced the fire a number of years ago, there is nothing worse than a, a fire. And oftentimes, those things lead to massive fires, unfortunate fires and harm to people, especially kids. So, I would encourage all of us to make sure that we refrain from cheering the fourth with that element and hopefully our town can stay, it's gonna, can stay safe and free of any fire. And Adam, do you want to add, you know, anything to that?
Sure. Once your announcements are done, I'll, I'll have just one.
Okay. And also, it is hot, but, and there's a lot of times where people can go swim. Make sure that you are watching the little kids. If you've ever had friends lose a child, it is probably the worst thing that you can ever, ever experience. And so, just make sure that if you have a pool, if your neighbor has a pool, that, that we take care of each other and make sure that especially the kids are, you know, cared for, watched for, and that is important. With that, that's all that I have. And Adam?
Mendel?
Yes.
I want to, if I could, extend on something you said. You know, through the year, we do an awful lot of work up here and it's like drinking water from a fire hose sometimes. Staff does quite a bit as well. I mean, they're the ones that have all the precursor, all the staff reports and things of that nature. But at the State of the City address that we had, for me, it brought it all home as far as all the accomplishments. That was only a small smattering of what we did, but for me, it just kind of changed your perspective again. And we were in the middle of this. We do this, you know, every week. And in fact, you know, we brief once a week as well. And there's an awful lot of work that gets done and it just kind of came home that night, you might say, for me with the, the presentations from staff, the PowerPoint presentation that was made. And, you know, and Joey, I mean, you did an amazing job of getting all that ready and getting the room ready and things of that nature and, and the staff getting prepared. And Adam, you did a really good job of opening that up as well, along with Mendel. But I just wanted to say that it really, it really brought it home as far as the amount of work that the city does as a whole to run the city on, on an annual basis. And next year, there's gonna be a whole plethora of more things that are gonna get done as well. So, it was really, really nice. I just had to make that comment because it really did change your perspective, at least for me, being in the weeds and might say all the time doing this. And then all of a sudden, at the end, you see the fruits of your labor.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you. That's, that's well said. Okay, with that, Adam?
Evening, Mayor. A council member, I'm so glad you came around on our city logo. We appreciate it. But with my time...
Boom. I mentioned nothing about the logo.
You know, I appreciate those, those, those words of encouragement. I'm actually going to ask the city clerk to please provide an update on the council candidate form. I know we touched on it briefly. Just wanted to give a little more information to make sure if you are available to come and interested that you do come. Kathleen?
Thank you. Yes, as a council member, Boyer...
Thank you. Yes, as Councilmember Boyer had mentioned, we are going to be holding a pre-nomination candidate workshop on July 1st at 6 o'clock in Bidwell Forum. We're inviting anybody interested to join us. If you're interested in either running for council or just getting some additional information about Glendora elections, we're going to have representatives from Los Angeles County. We're going to have a, a table set up from the Fair Political Practices. They will not be in personal attendance, but we'll have to work on that for next year. And we'll also have a NetFile there who can actually schedule trainings and help people learn how to file electronically with their campaign disclosures as well as their statement of economic interests. We're going to be talking about running for the city council nomination 101, basic information. We'll be going over candidate statements and ballot designations as well as trying to provide a more festive environment. We are not going to be utilizing a PowerPoint. We're actually going to be having conversations and tables set up. So we're really excited about the new format. We're really excited to have Los Angeles County, NetFile and FPPC participate in this workshop. And if you have any questions, please call the clerk's office. We're happy to give you any additional directions. If you can't make it at 6 o'clock, feel free to come by anytime after that. Like I said, we're going to be treating this more as a, a workshop station so you can come and go as you please.
Adam, thank you. Madam Clerk, thank you. City Attorney, welcome. Is there anything that you want to?
Yes, I, I do have something to add. I, I would like to thank the quick and efficient staff at AAA and for their assistance in getting me here so quickly and the, the wonderful cashier at Shell Station for lending me a phone and helping take care of me.
Well, thank you. That's a, that's an honest thing that, that you said. And I just asked my grandson the other day, he started the drive. I said, do you have a AAA card? And he said, yes, sir. And I go, you know, that's, that's the right thing to carry. So there you go. Okay, good deal. All right, with that, we will move to the consent calendar.
I will move items two through five.
Items two through five can be enacted with one vote. So with David out, there's been a second by Michael, seconded by Karen. And we're going to do an oral roll call. Is that correct? Or should we vote here too?
You can do both.
Okay, so we will vote, the four of us will vote here and then you can do the oral roll call.
Of course. Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Frieden?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, so got through items two through five. Unfinished business, item six. Item six is to consider changes to the Glendora Community Services Commission. This is going to be led by Administrative Assistant Megan Stone. Megan, welcome. Great to have you here. You're such an essential part of that area and we appreciate you. So tell us what's up.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. This evening, I'm bringing an item for the consideration of changes to the City of Glendora Community Services Commission. The purpose of this report is to provide a comprehensive review of the duties and authorities of the Community Services Commission as outlined in the Glendora Municipal Code, Section 2.18.020, Section B. By examining these responsibilities, the city council will have the opportunity to assess the effectiveness of the current rules and make any necessary suggestions for improvements. On May 16th, 2024, the Community Services Commission discussed the potential for adjustments to scheduling the frequency and timing of the commission meetings. Following a unanimous agreement, the commission recommended to the city council to change the commission's regularly scheduled meetings from 7:00 PM once per month to 6:00 PM every other month on odd numbered months. This recommendation was then presented to council on May 28th alongside a report on its public meetings, rules and protocols. In relation to the frequency of the meetings, you have requested further information regarding the role and authority of the Community Services Commission to better understand their responsibilities and purpose in the community. The duties of the Community Services Commission, as outlined in the Glendora Municipal Code, state that they act in an advisory capacity of the council and the Director of Community Services, now Recreation and Human Services, in all matters pertaining to park maintenance, recreation programs, park development, and to cooperate with other governmental agencies and civic groups in the advancement of recreation programming. Regarding parks specifically, the commission shall advise in the development of parks and facilities, recommend the adoption of standards on areas and facilities, advise in long-range capital improvements, and may advise in the planning, sorry, planting of all street and parkway trees. With respect to recreation, human services, transportation and wilderness areas, the commission shall review, revise and recommend policies on recreation services for approval by the council, make periodic inventories of recreation services that exist or may be needed, interpret the needs of the public to the director and city council, and advise in the preparation of the annual recreation program and budget. Each July, Community Services Commission reorganizes and selects specific committees or councils to serve as a liaison for. This election might be based on personal interests, expertise or community priorities. Representatives from the commission attend meetings of various department groups, including Youth Sports Council, Homelessness Services, Trails Council, Multicultural Event and Teens for Glendora. After attending these meetings, each commissioner provides a recap of the discussions, decisions and updates from their respective group meeting. This recap might include highlights, challenges, upcoming events, initiatives or any other relevant information. In addition to attending monthly meetings with local groups, the commission also attend community events, which is an essential aspect of the commissioner's role in staying connected with the community they serve. Commissioners' attendance at events such as ribbon cuttings for reopening of parks or city events demonstrates the commission's support for community growth and development. It also allows them to celebrate milestones and achievements alongside residents and other local officials. In the past year, staff conducted research on the frequency of significant agenda items presented at commission meetings, typically ranging from three to five items per month. These agenda items encompass reports on upcoming events from Human Services, Recreation and the Teen Center, biannual updates from the Transportation Division and Homelessness Services, as well as yearly summaries of capital improvement projects and Glendora youth basketball activities. The Community Services Commission convened on May 16th, 2024 to explore the feasibility of transitioning to bimonthly meetings during odd numbered months. During the deliberation on meeting frequency, it was suggested that this adjustment, reducing the current 12 meetings per year, would enhance the efficiency for both staff and commissioners. Each session would encompass five to nine agenda items fostering more substantial and informative discussions. Currently, three meetings per year are canceled. The April meeting, which coincides with the Citizen of the Year event, prompting the commission to cancel. August meeting, which is typically canceled to accommodate staff and commissioner vacations. And the December meeting is replaced by a special session dedicated to judging the Holiday Home Decorating Contest. With nine meetings remaining, staff proposed shifting to six regularly scheduled meetings plus the December special meeting, resulting in the loss of only three regularly scheduled meetings. Commissioners concurred that fewer but more comprehensive meetings would be more productive and enlightening, given the richer agenda. Certainly, should there arise a requirement for addressing a time-sensitive matter, scheduling a special meeting can be easily facilitated. The commission currently lacks a set of bylaws. However, staff has conducted research on sample bylaws from other cities, including Sierra Madre, Clermont and Azusa, which will serve as a guide for drafting them. These examples outline the responsibilities of the commission, including making recommendations for the development, enhancement and adjustment of recreation and community services and facilities. Analyzing the regulations of commissions across various cities will assist us in collecting and honing the criteria sought by the city council for our commission. After reviewing other bylaws and determining our city's priorities, we will draft new bylaws with city council's direction for our Community Services Commission, which will involve removing transportation from their jurisdiction. Trees will remain within their jurisdiction until the Urban Force Manual is updated, after which the matter could return to city council for further discussion. Although transportation and trees were removed from the Recreation and Human Services Department during the city's reorganization in 2019, there was no corresponding adjustment to the scope of the Community Services Commission. However, we believe now is an opportune moment to enact this change. If desired, staff would continue to invite transportation to provide biannual, community-related updates and informative presentations. Staff is requesting consideration that city council provide direction or insight to staff, if any, regarding the scope of the Community Services Commission, in addition to granting any additional authorities pertaining to recreation and human services, and revisit the request by the Community Services Commission to change the frequency in which regularly scheduled meetings occur from once a month to the third Thursday of odd numbered months as initially proposed. At this point, I would like to turn it over to you, Mayor and councilmembers, to discuss and provide direction to staff. This concludes my report and I am available to answer any questions you might have, as well as Recreation and Human Services Director.
Megan, thank you. Excellent report and the staff report was very well done. I think we've all had a chance to read that. So thank you for the samples that, that were a part of that. Michael, I'll start out with, with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Megan, really, really nice report. Thank you very much. Particularly on page 117, we line out all the duties, responsibilities. That's really, really good. Couple of questions that I have is, as it's written right now, can the members of the commission, can they agendize items?
And here comes the, the all-know John.
Yes, Gary. With the same as what you guys do with two motions, they can have it agendized.
Because I didn't see that on the, on the, on item here. So is that something we can possibly add?
Yes, when we redo the bylaws, we can add that, yes.
So is it, is it necessary to do bylaws since we already have a scope?
That was a request from council that all the commissions have bylaws?
Is that something that staff recommends?
I think it always helps to provide clarity. I mean, John's been doing this for many years and I, I think probably having clarity and expectations is, as the presentation showed, you know, the Community Services or the Recreation Human Services Department now has changed its scope over the years. And, you know, we've gone from Trail Committee to Advisory and so on and so forth. So I think having clear outline and roles and responsibilities is never a bad thing. Helps us revisit these tasks in the future as well.
Can I bring up Eddie for a moment, please?
Eddie is the chairman of this auspicious group. So thank you, Eddie, for being.
Good evening, Mayor.
For being here.
Yes.
They do a tremendous amount of work and I know that, I thought David Gerber walked in. He's a member. Just so that those, those people that are watching from home will know who, who we're talking about. Just so, so that, okay, Michael.
So have you two read the outlined scope in our staff report?
For, for this evening?
Yes.
I, I didn't.
I briefly did, as it was submitted to us to a degree. I just haven't had the time to go through it in detail because we got it right just recent.
So I'll cut to the chase. Are you familiar with the scope of what you can and can't do? Yes and no. Okay.
Yes and no. I think, I think there has been, having been on the commission for a little bit longer than Eddie and I think there has been a little bit of a lack in that information to all of us to a degree, to where I think not everybody understands exactly what we can and really cannot do. I think we would like to all do more. That's why we're here, because we want to support the community. We want to do more. I just don't know that there's a feeling that we can. And I think we need to learn that.
Were you aware that you can put things on the agenda with another request?
Yes.
Yes, but not the format, not the mechanism of it, but yes.
So do you think it'd be helpful instead of us ruling tonight on the request to change it to six meetings, to send it back to you folks, to have staff work with you on what you can and can't do with the scope? And also realize that you can't agendize items? Would it be helpful and then take your vote and then come back to us?
Yes, definitely. I mean, also majority, the majority of the board right now currently started during COVID. So we all started at home, online. So that, I, I believe had a little bit to do with, do with, I'm sorry?
Rocky start?
Not rocky, but it's just not as clear, not, not as clear.
There was not a lot of things going on during the COVID, right?
Yeah.
Within the last year and a half, two years, we can all see what the city has begun to do. We've ramped up. There's been a lot more activity. There's a lot more planned. There's a lot more financial budgetary, you know, funds that they're receiving. So there's a lot more that can and will be done. And I think that those are the, the things that having not been going from zero to 100 very quickly has kind of made it a little bit more challenging on our end to understand where, where we, where, how far we can go. And I, going back and relooking at it, me personally, I want to have substance in a meeting. I think it's important and I would like for us to have more and have more ability to, to say whether it's recommendations, making decisions. I think that's the reason why we are a part of this commission is to be able to, to have that type of influence, shall we say.
So if you had a workshop or a special meeting to discuss all this, that would be probably helpful?
Very helpful.
Okay, great. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Michael, thank you. Karen?
Hi, thank you. And thank you for the report. I think that the way that it was outlined in the staff report with the various topics that were listed for those meetings, you know, accomplishes that because rather than having an item here, there, that it gave you a direction and a plan with those certain things coming up at those times of the year and a focus. So I liked the way that was outlined and looks like it would provide a little bit more efficiency for you and focus. So I support the recommendation that staff provided us with.
All right. Thank you, Karen. Gary?
Okay, come on back up. I, you know, I got to tell you, you're sitting, Megan, great report. And, you know, we're going through all the details of this and, you know, community service is a little bit different than, and everything else. You guys are the fun group, okay? And we're definitely not the fun group. But I got to tell you, I, I've been thinking about what happened. Because when Mendel and I first got on council, we, we saw that the Community Services Commission was sort of in a rut of just taking in information, going along with it and, and you, you would pick what color the cover of the quarterly report's going to be, okay? And, and so, you know, we worked really hard to try to get people more engaged and it was working. And then COVID come and everything changed again. And, and I, you know, John has been getting so many kudos lately, his head just keeps getting bigger. But I'm actually, I'm thinking to myself, our problem is that staff does too good of a job. We, we all trust that John and Annie and the team are doing a great job in what they do. So they don't need input from us. But they do. Because, you know, they're, they're doing the job of everything that is being done and we trust fully. But when we include commissioners, all of a sudden, there's ideas that come up that may not have been thought of because the one thing that staff has to deal with, they got a job to do every day of taking care of everything. Those extra little things are, are the kind of stuff that we see as, as council members, as commissioners, that they may not see on a regular basis. And I, I just went through and, you know, first off, I, I always, and you guys know this, as council, as commissioners, we're the voice of the residents. We are communicating with residents. We hear what they think. And we want to bring those ideas back to the city of things that we want to consider. The other thing that I heard from, in, in a couple of our conversations, it's okay to vote no. Okay, 5-0 votes are not necessary with everything. We have a lot of 4-1 or 3-2 votes and it sends a message, I think, that we're talking about this, we're having conversations and we're not always on the same page. But I just put together a brief list of things that, that popped in my head and, and a couple of them are pretty unique. But I'm going, over the next few years, we're going to be doing things or discussing and possibly doing things that are going to change the city for. that are going to change the city for decades to come. And I look at, I look at the South Hills Bike Park. Okay, that's something. We've made a commitment that we're going to be moving forward with that. I've had people ask me, you know, is this going to be for BMX bikes? Is it going to be for mountain bikes? Are we going to allow motorbikes? And my answer is, I don't know. I don't know the difference between a BMX bike and a, you know, a mountain bike. It's a bicycle you jump on, you ride it in the dirt, and and so on. And so getting engaged in what that is going to look like, staff has a great idea as to what the plan may be, but the idea of the other things that may need to go there is what we need to interject in. And so that is something that's going to be here 100 years from now. And we have an opportunity to have a voice in that, and it's really important that, that we become engaged in that. I look at Big Dalton. One of my biggest disappointments, as I talk about I'm going to be leaving the council, is the stone house up at Big Dalton has been sitting there vacant. We've tried a couple of different things with it that hasn't worked. That thing was there, and it was a priority for me when I first got elected, and it still isn't going to be utilized as I'm going to be leaving here after 10 years. And I look at that, the opportunities we have with that. We got a resident here in town that used to be a commissioner, Jackie Dornick, that has a lot of interest in creating a nature center there. The Trails Committee has talked about doing something with it. So, you know, it's a type of a project that I would love to see the commission get more engaged and talk to the community and and try to, you know, bring some ideas back. The Girl Scout Hut that's up there, I think you're all familiar with, you know, it's just sort of that ghost back in the corner that we all ignore, and we're going to do something with it eventually. But, you know, that's an asset up at Big Dalton that we've never used. Do we need to invest money in it? Do we have the need to use that? Does it need to be torn down and go away, and can that become a picnic area or a parking lot? I mean, there's a lot of different things that could happen, but those are the things. Bathrooms up at Big Dalton, you know, are really an issue. I looked at the renaming of the South Hills, you know, we're having that conversation. It's important that, you know, we have engagement from the community, because when you do something like that, that again, it's going to be in place for the next 100 years, and making sure that we don't make a mistake as we move forward with that conversation. We've had the conversation about the Equestrian Park. The idea's been kicked around, I don't know how many times, about the Equestrian Park becoming housing. I would hate to see that happen. But, you know, what do we do with it? Corral 35 has done an amazing job doing what they do there. Michael and I debate all the time. He says nothing's ever going on up there, and I go, I see stuff going on all the time, but I think I spend more time in the canyon than you do. But, but it's, it's the type of thing, what do we do with that? We're going to be talking about Glen Oaks Golf Course. 10 years ago, when we first got here, and we saw that we were trying to run a golf course, and we sucked at it. And so we formed a partnership with the, and we got a great partner running Glen Oaks, and Glen Oaks has become a shining star in the community. And you look at what ideas could we have with the Equestrian Center that we might be able to do something with it? The urban trails are going to be coming up, and I don't know how much engagement we're having, because it's a project that's moving forward as far as amenities we have along those trails, exercise equipment, benches. But I'm going to share, was we were getting ready for the Field of Heroes down at Gladstone Park. There's a couple of girls down there, and they came to me and they go, and her mom's going, look, I think he's in charge. He's in charge. Go talk to him. And so they come up and they asked me about the lion drinking fountain. And we had a number of those lion drinking fountains when I first moved here in 1980, and that's the only one we have left. Those were donation from the Glendora Lions Club, I don't know how many years ago. But is there a way to save that drinking fountain, or to redo it, or replace it? I don't know. But just those two little girls coming up and talking about that, I'm going, okay, this is a project that we all know it's there. We all know it's in need of help, but we haven't done anything. Fourth of July, you know, we're doing the Field of Heroes. This year, we're going to have the movie down at Gladstone. And we're having conversations about creating a bigger festivity for the Fourth of July. We've always talked about doing that here in Glendora. We used to have the carnival over at Citrus that went away. And so it'd be nice to have something, and I think Community Services, the staff is on board. They'd like to try to bring something back. So these are more things. And then, last thing, next to last thing, I think about LaFetra. No, no, I'm ranting. I am ranting. Let me rant. Because this is, this is my passion. I think John and I worked together for 30 years.
I think after he gets off the council, we're going to appoint him to the Community Services.
The LaFetra Center has needed painted since the first night I sat in a seat, and still isn't painted. And I'm thinking about it, and we keep having the conversation that there's always a reason, and and we're looking at structural issues and so on and so forth. But that's the type of thing I think the Community Services Commission, at around budget time, could be coming and demanding that, hey, you guys got to put some money into this, and we have to do something. And let's face it, you know, the more, the louder people are, the more things get done. And then, you know, I'm thinking about the benches. I love benches. I love benches on trails. I'm a hiker. I think people know I'm a hiker, but I'm now an old hiker. And so, you know, I look at benches, and I'm challenging Michael. I have thought about it. I've never made it to the top of Poopout Trail. And I think that, Michael, when I kick the bucket, I want you to buy a bench. How much is a bench?
Like $3,000, $3,500. You can buy a bench, dedicate it to me, and I want a plaque up there that said, "Old fat guys cannot miss it on this bench," because we're never going to make it up to the top of there. But
But I'm rambling, I'm rambling, I'm rambling. But these are all of the things that we think about that we have not done a good job in engaging the talent that we have, because there's a variety of personalities on the Community Services Commission. And so all of those different ideas can be brought forward. And I know you want to do these things. I just think it's important that we know that you can do them. We value your recommendations and everything, but going back to that, John and the team do such a great job, sometimes we just sort of sit back and let them do their job, so. I'm done.
Right.
But that's where I'm at. I guess you didn't need to stand there to listen to that.
Glad I did, because
I appreciate it.
A lot of what you said is exactly what I think goes through our minds, right? That there are multitude of things that are out there, and these guys, as you said, they do such an amazing job. At our last meeting, I was complimenting them on all the new variety of things that they're bringing to the city, right? We have new events. They're thinking outside the box. They're creating things for all different ages and different, you know, facts of life that are now in Glendora. And it's amazing what we're doing. There's so much more that's out there. How do we wrap our arms around it, and how do we participate in that to help facilitate some of those things, exactly of the things that you said? And it's a matter of figuring that out and allowing us, I don't think we all had the feeling that what we could, you know, what's the scope to do?
We could spend money.
We could, yeah. And so I think, I totally agree, and adding those types of things and being more aware of those types of things would definitely enable us to have more solid meetings, and instead of just coming in for 35, 45 minutes and then going home. That's not what we really signed up for. We wanted to participate and do more, so that's, that's the end result.
Anyway, I want to encourage you to be much more aggressive and come back to council, be extremely demanding starting January.
When he's not here. When he's not here.
I saw on your upcoming agendas that were suggested and recommended in the staff report, some of those very items, the the bike park, the urban trails, some of those things are on there for you to dig into, so.
Yeah, absolutely, inclusive of, we met with Glen Oaks, you know, and all of those types of activities. Those things brought, brought, you know, life to, to the commission. I mean, we probably spent more time speaking with them than we had on anything else in the last, you know, two or three meetings, just because it's new, it's exciting. You know, things that are happening. Those are the things that I think we've talked about wanting more.
I got to throw one more at you, you know, while you guys are sitting out there in the audience, I thought about, hey, hey. But, you know, somebody just reached out to me. There's a program involved in order to try to get youth more involved in golf called the 100 Hole Hike. That somebody that actually went to school with Daniel is involved in this organization. And they reached out to me to ask about the possibility of Glen Oaks being involved in this. So, you know, it's something that we can talk about and maybe see if there's a partnership that we could do, and the whole purpose of this, as golf is an old man's sport, you know, Mendo plays it on a regular basis. But, but it's one of those things of introducing young people to golf, and golf's an expensive sport for people, and so a lot of kids don't have that opportunity. So there is a program out there, and, you know, that's the type of stuff that, again, we can get, we can get more involved in.
And kudos on the bike park. I mean, you guys put that forth, and it's going forward, so it's going to be great. And it's going to be great for the community.
That started out with high school kids that pushed for it.
Yeah.
And they asked for it, they pushed for it. We had the conversation, staff embraced it, and moving forward, so. Anyway, okay, now I think I'm done.
All right. I think you guys can take a seat. Because I don't need you up here, but I'm going to call on the Mayor Pro Tim. David, anything? Questions, comments?
I appreciate their information on the validity of the timing of meetings. One thing I do not want to do is discount the vitality of their purpose. So I don't want them to think, hey, there's fewer meetings because there's not enough to do. As we've just heard, there's plenty to do, and their input is extremely valuable, so I don't want to do less, but if they think their meeting schedule and adjusting that still accomplishes the goals that they're looking at, then okay. But again, I think the idea of what they can do and accomplish and the creativity they have is important. You know, I'd like to see if we can bring back the Community Services citizen recognitions. Maybe they can help guide that. You know, not add to staff, but rather, you know, they can, the commission can possibly do that. So if they think that the purpose of the commission can be accomplished and grow and do it in fewer meetings, then so be it. I do like the clarification of the scope and, you know, some bylaws of what we want to accomplish. I think that's important to revisit. It's probably not unreasonable to look at that and all the commissions to, again, make sure that mutually we're accomplishing what we want to do. So that, that would be very important to do. It sounds like the commission is willing to adjust their meeting schedule, and staff thinks that's suitable, and will accomplish what we want. In the long run, I can support that. Thank you.
David, thank you, and I support that as well, and you guys, the five of you are are just really smart, gifted, and energized. I watched part of the meeting that you had just this past week, and the energy that was there, the inquisitive spirit that was there is really good, and we've all shared some great wins this past year. The Cultural Fest, you know, Annie, John, the team, did a great job, and that was a part of, you know, of your scope, something new, something that can expand. With Pompe Park, we're getting calls from all over to come and, you know, really use that, and I think more, more can be done there. The pickleball courts, there's not a day that goes by that somebody doesn't say to me, why don't we have more? We need more. The lines are too long. And that's been a wonderful win for all of us. So I, I, I support what the staff has said. I, I think what Michael was alluding to an hour and a half ago after Gary got done preaching to us. No, it was all, it was very, very, you know, good. Gary's got this short-term thing going on, so I'm afraid we're going to have some long expressions like this during the next four, four or five months. So we just need to strap on and, you know, kind of be ready for it, but, but I really do think that it would be good to have you guys have a, whatever you want to call it, you know, working day to self-assess and to figure out really what you are about and what you want, what you need. Ask the questions not only of, you know, yourselves, but of staff, and really of us, because we're a collaborative group. So I would, I would support that. And I support the fact that meetings need to be important, and you don't need to have them just to have them. And if that's the will of what you guys want, then I support that, so. I think Michael's light is on, so.
So there's a, Karen, you have a motion on here to accept the recommendation.
Yes.
There's no second on here, but I would like to see if we can continue this to maybe the last meeting in August, or even further depending on the Community Services Commission to be able to do what they need to do with staff, and then come back to us with their vote, final vote, after they're educated, and then we can make a decision of what, on the recommendations that you want to have. Do you want to go with six? Now, I'm, I'm fine with whatever, but you folks need to have the information to make that decision. And I think there's a lot of information was given this evening, particularly from my colleague to my right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure it needs to be continued.
We continue to want.
About the ability to cancel meetings. It's very easy if they choose not to. If, you know, we've talked about this twice already, some of us more than others, but we
Don't name any names.
Personally, I, I think I'd like to, you know, make a motion to, Karen, you have a motion on the table, but we're looking for direction. Was there a particular direction you wanted to give?
Yeah, actually, that number two, and then revisit the request by Community Services to go from once a month to the third Thursday of the odd numbers month. That was my motion to accept that staff recommendation.
I think they need to discuss this first before, and then let them come back, and if that's what they want again after this information, then we can decide.
And just for clarification, to make a change, a resolution will be required. So you can direct us to create that new resolution, bring it back at a later date. But a resolution is required to change their meeting schedule.
And I think that they want to have this discussion and discuss amongst themselves with the parameters. And now that they can agendize things and things of that nature, and Gary gave them a whole shopping list of Christmas things that they can do.
No matter what the council does, the item does not need to be continued.
Then find them.
Staff would come back at a later date if that's the case.
I make a motion to
My thought would be that we just choose to do nothing, and if after further discussion, you guys really go, nah, we only need six meetings, then it can be put on a future agenda. If we're okay with it staying the way it is, then we just move on.
We just do a receiving file?
Well, they're looking for direction.
Yeah, they're looking for
I don't know if you need your receiving file. I think the direction. If the council wants further discussions, they could direct staff to come back after that is held, or leave it open-ended and say, come back if additional direction is needed. We can, we can do either of those things.
Okay, let's say, based upon the information that was provided in the staff report that outlined those meetings with very thorough and robust agendas, and of course, opportunity to add to those agendas. What if they say, we only need those meetings, and we're going to cancel all these other meetings?
I think come back and say that.
No, I mean, can't they just cancel it? They don't need our permission to do it. That's what I'm saying. Either you're going to run their show, or you're going to let them run their show, but to keep coming back here, that gets silly.
The whole idea, let them run their show, but with more information now.
So I guess the question is, your motion is to move to six meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
But it doesn't have a second, so it doesn't look like it's going anywhere.
Then I'd like to make a substitute. It wouldn't be a substitute motion. It'd just be a different motion, right?
David wants to talk.
Oh, David, I'm sorry.
David?
Isn't that what we're sitting here looking at is the community, the commission has requested this change?
So I mean, I thought that's where this whole thing started, and that's why I'm a little confused why it
But I think they have more information.
David? David, David, we, we kind of stepped in to your lane there. So go ahead and finish what you said.
Is the commission not requesting to make the change in the schedule? And then in addition, staff has recommended some increase of clarification of scope, which is always a benefit. So it's kind of a win-win, isn't it?
Mayor Pro Tim, and I'll, I'll look at John and Megan and, and if the two commissioners want to come back up and tell us we're all wrong, they're more than happy and free to do that. Uh, it sounds like in parsing through all the information, there, there, it's really a twofold, Mayor Pro Tim. I, I think, as was previously said, I think there is a request that if we do move to six meetings, the agendas will be more robust. Addition, in addition to that, there is a separate discussion on the goals and tasks of the commission itself, which could mandate that additional meetings are needed. It could mean that the meetings are even longer, but I think they are two different conversations if, if, if I am understanding this correctly.
That is correct. We have a hard time when we're doing our nine or 10 meetings to fill two or three meetings. We have, we're looking at each other like, what can we bring to them? I know you gave us a laundry list. The, um, Lafatre Center will be painted. I think it's in next year's CIP. And that's how it ranked out. Um, and a lot of those other things, we can work with Public Works on some of those projects and bring those to commission. We always look for new things and and have them get along. We mentioned to them last Thursday that we could have a workshop, have no problem. We need to know what they're, what they want on that workshop so we can provide information to them. And we have no problem with that. It was just that we were having a hard time filling those months with one or two items where it would take us 20 minutes and we were in a, and out of a meeting. So we went down to this six to bring more substance and our meeting last month or last week was an hour and a half. And it was great dialogue back and forth. And that's what we feel like would be beneficial to both sides, the staff and the commission.
So what I'm hearing is there's two different things here. There's meetings, which Karen has expressed an action to implement. They can always do more, they can always do less. And then second of all, there's the idea of kind of finding the bylaws and finding your mission and finding yourselves as, as we've all tried to express.
Yeah, they're our eyes and ears to the public. They're the advisory group.
Right.
Uh, appointed by you guys. So we, we asked them to bring stuff to us and we asked them to go to all these events. Um, like I mentioned, my kids are now grown where they have kids in elementary, junior high, high school. And they're in with those, bring those ideas to us so that we, as a staff, can see what's out there and what might be turning the needle.
And, you know,
I would like to second the most.
That's just stuff that
Oh, yes.
In my head.
And that's what how we grow.
All five, all five of those people have a list as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, but I, again, I'm going back to, it's relatively easy to cancel a meeting. If we went to six and then we had to hold special meetings, that's actually more difficult.
As I've always been on commission for my 30 some years, we've never, I don't believe canceled a meeting. The staff, I guess, felt weird canceling a meeting and we've made stuff up to have a meeting. And that, um, so to us, it was easier to go to this. And then if we had to add a meeting to then have an additional meeting.
Is it easier to add or easy to cancel?
With Community Services Commission, we've never really had a problem getting a meeting scheduled. They tend to have to be a little bit more flexible with their schedule because of all the events and stuff. But traditionally, it tends to be easier to have something already set in the books, just because then people have it in their calendars. But with that being said, you don't want people having to schedule something in their calendar when there's no value in them coming or meeting, or, or maybe allowing them to better utilize their time.
And if you're looking at optics, it looks better to add a meeting than to cancel one.
Right, right.
But not optics, but how much work staff has to do to actually add a special meeting.
It's not a lot of extra work. I mean, from a, the city clerk standpoint, it's not a lot of extra work. We send an email out. I mean, it's kind of like when we do it with you guys. We send an email out and your guys' availability is much more complicated.
Gentlemen, what would you like to see?
Well.
John, I, John, but isn't it true that, that you guys asked for six? You voted.
We mentioned, we, uh, told them that we were having a hard time and that six would, would add more substance to those meetings.
And so you guys, we agreed. So I will second.
If it doesn't work, they can always change it.
So I'll second the motion.
Yeah, the agreement was as long as we're making everybody's time efficient.
Right.
And, and then if there were, um, meetings that we needed to add, we could, we understood that it was fine. And that was discussed as well, that we could just add in the, uh, end of a meeting just as easy.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so two things. One, motion has been made to go to six, which concurs with the expression that you guys made or you had asked for. Second of all, uh, and, and I'm just speaking now. That we probably need a directive motion. Maybe we don't, because Adam, you've heard us as to the second step, and that is we want a set of bylaws. We want, we want you to, to, to kind of have a a workshop to kind of find out kind of what your mission is.
Sure.
More, more so than what we have now.
That's part of the recommendation for number one, to give direction.
Okay.
Yes. And I think that direction would be clear to staff and I'll look at.
So, okay.
Especially Megan. Nodding her head in agreement. So
Okay.
Uh, it's really, I think we have the direction that we need.
Okay.
So the policy discussion or decision of the city council then is do you want us to come back with a resolution to move to six meetings?
Yeah.
Plus the bylaws and the workshop.
That's all in, in the, in the, in the direction, yeah.
And there's
In the direction.
And there's a motion that expresses that.
Yes.
Correct. Okay.
It's by Karen.
All right. David, are you clear before we vote?
Yes, uh, I was willing to second that, so let's vote.
Okay, okay. Then why don't we go ahead and vote? The motion that is before us.
I'll conduct the oral roll call.
And then Madam Clerk, you can do the roll call.
Of course. Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Freenell? Mayor Pro Tim? Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Yes.
All right. So Eddie, you, you've heard us, David has heard John, Megan, great, great report. And I think we have a pretty clear expression of, of kind of where we want to go.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you all. All right. Good deal.
And Megan, was, was this your first presentation to us tonight?
Great job. Yes.
We didn't mean any of this. We just wanted to mess with you tonight, so.
You did a great job. Okay, uh, speaking of some fun things, we'll go to item nine. And that is
Seven.
Seven. I mean, seven. Yeah.
Wishful thinking, man. It feels like it should be item nine, yes.
We are here now to consider approving the amendment number three with PW Golf Management to, to the ground lease for the Glen Oaks Golf Course. And presenting is Kelsey Fay, the analyst, that has done a tremendous job in creating this report and working with our partners at Glen Oaks. Kelsey, welcome.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I will be presenting amendment number three to the Glen Oaks Golf Course Agreement. PW Golf Management has been operating and maintaining the Glen Oaks Golf Course since 2009. In 2014, they submitted a side letter of understanding to modify the original agreement to add additional options to extend the lease. In 2018, council approved a resolution granting a conditional use permit to sell beer on site. In 2019, city council approved amendment number one to the agreement to extend the term of the lease for the second additional five-year term. In 2021, city council approved amendment number two to extend the term of the lease, adding two additional five-year extension periods. Now in 2024, they are seeking to extend the lease for the third renewal option. The proposal is also to add three more extension options to the contract to go until 2059 and to exclude the revenue generated from the new putt course that they're planning to install for five years commencing the completion. Previous improvements that have been made include updates to the clubhouse and patio area, shade structures and dividers on the range, top tracer, enhanced seating on the range, addition of a snack shack and more. PW Golf Management would like to continue making enhancements to the property and stay longer, which is why they're proposing in the contract amendment that they be granted the three additional renewal options. Additional improvements that have been proposed by PW Golf Management include the addition of the 18-hole enhanced mini golf course, otherwise known as the putt course, and the addition of a larger updated snack shack, which will include ice cream options as well. They also plan to up, uh, apply for an updated liquor license to be able to sell wine on the premises in addition to beer. And they'll be adding additional landscaping to enhance the look of the facility. PW Golf Management is also proposing that we exclude the revenue generated from the putt course from the variable lease payment for five years after it's operational to help them recover their cost of installation. Tonight we have with us Paul Wellenstein, the owner of PW Golf Management, that will go through the next slides and go over what he's proposing.
Welcome, Paul.
Thank you. Um, good evening, council. I'm here tonight with my wife, Donna, with, uh, representing PW Golf Management. What we're proposing is, like Kelsey said, adding an 18-hole putt course, roughly 300 yards in length, um, average hole running roughly 50 feet. Uh, 1,700 foot, uh, square foot, uh, facility that would seat roughly 50 with the outside patio area with moving the kitchen in that facility. Just to better service with what we have going there now with the, uh, top tracer and the, the putt course. With our business model, we always look at areas we can upgrade to better service our customers. Uh, what is out there? That is the new and upcoming um, item in the golf industry. When we got into, uh, top tracer, we were the third in all of California to put, uh, top tracer in. Um, right now, the up and coming, uh, new item is these putt courses. I don't know if you've heard of, uh, uh, putt, um, putt stroke. Uh, but that is, um, something that Tiger Woods is doing, um, out in Florida. And, uh, they're fabulous facilities. There are 36-hole, uh, facilities with a structure very similar what we're, we're looking to erect. Wrong way. Here's some renderings. That is actually the rendering of the bathroom, um, the hitting bays of, uh, uh, top tracer. Um, it would have enhanced landscaping, more of the tropical theme with the palm trees and so forth. We would like to carry that theme with the boulevard enhancement. Um, the snack shack would, like I said, house the, um, kitchen area towards the back to better service our, our facility. Um, it would seat roughly 50 people with the, uh, patio, covered patio. And then also the patio that is outside adjacent to this, uh, area would seat roughly another 30 people. So together with the whole seating arrangement, we're looking at roughly 80, 80 people that it will, uh, seat. Some more renderings. Um, the renderings is a little deceiving. Uh, the course will have more undulations. The bunkers will be a little deeper than what you see here. Um, it's gonna look very similar to a real golf course. All the, all the, uh, greenness you see there is, uh, synthetic turf. Uh, so the only irrigation will be some drip lines through the, uh, landscaping. Um, the area that we're proposing to, um, set this on is an area that, um, really isn't being utilized. Um, there is a chipping green in that location. But I would say three quarters of this half acre, um, is not being utilized. So it's an area that is just sitting there right now, not being used for anything. Here's some renderings of the proposed, uh, snack shack. The front, uh, middle picture to the right there would be the front of the, uh, snack shack. Um, overlooking the putt course. Um, we're looking to add a video wall towards the, it'd be the west side of the, uh, putt course that we're gonna be able to show, um, um, live, uh, broadcasts of sporting events and that type of thing while uh, the people are utilizing our facility. You can see the inside of the facility. Um, the seating there, I don't believe, um, right now that is, I think we have it down to 32. Um, just with the, uh, the arrangement of being able to move around in the facility. The ice cream area, we have changed, uh, to add more flavors. I believe we're gonna have somewhere around 16 flavors of ice cream. Uh, and the bottom area you can see as the, uh, kitchen area. Here's some side and front views again. Uh, the name of the course or the putt course is the putt course at Glen Oaks, uh, Glendora, California. Uh, top tracer logo. I guess that's all I have. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and.
All right. Thank you, Paul and Kelsey. Uh, while, while you're here, does anybody have questions? I, you know, I, I have a couple for Paul and Gary.
First of all, are you, you gonna make any changes to the current putting green?
Uh, we're actually looking to rebuild that whole putting green. The putting green will stay where it's at. Um, it's in a very old putting green. It's got a lot of Bermuda in it and the Bermuda checks out in the winter and we really struggled just to have it playable in the winter. So we're looking to rebuild that whole putting green. I don't know if it's gonna happen this fall, but in the near future.
And then have we done any studies or anything to address parking? Because on certain weekends, especially when we have big events going on at the teen center and you guys become so busy now, it can
Right.
challenging down there.
I mean, the only thing I can address there is there is an area behind the teen center. I believe it's somewhere, maybe John can help me there, but I believe there's about 60 stalls back in that area that is very underutilized. Um, that I believe the city was gonna be putting up some signs for additional parking, directing them back in that area.
That's correct. Yeah.
Yeah, we had, um, looked at or, uh, asked about the, uh, I don't know if you'd call it the boneyard or whatever, the city, the city yard over there behind the maintenance area that, uh, is fenced around, you know, has a fence around and so forth. If we can maybe somehow get the city to, um, use that for additional parking, but.
I guess that Yeah, we've If this becomes extremely successful, you know, there's a possibility that we could have a problem even with, uh, parking lot behind the teen center.
Yeah, it, it, it's a great question. We, we've also talked about how across the street from the current facility, the parking lot, uh, I guess that's closer to Glendora Avenue could be extended that way as well to add some additional parking. Um, if it was that successful and wildly successful, I, I think we could find a way to accommodate those, those challenges. So it is conversations that we've actually had internally before this was even proposed about what, look, what we could do to look at parking in that area. So definitely on staff's mind and as this moves forward and the courses developed, if staff has the opportunity to add parking, we'll always look to add parking.
That was it. Only questions. Thanks.
Um, Paul, will um this course be lit at night so it can be used?
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna keep the same hours. It's, it's still seven AM to ten PM.
Okay.
In the evening. So yes, it will be lit.
And food?
Food will be.
Service will be.
The uh.
Served there?
We are, yes. Well, we're gonna have the food in the uh snack shack area. We will not be serving food on the putt course.
No.
We will be serving uh the drinks.
Drinks.
Yes, beverages on the, on the putt course, yeah.
This is a real stupid question, but will the cups change like every day or two? So if I go down one time?
No.
No? Well, so I should take.
Oh, if you play it enough, you will.
That I can bet and I can win, then since the cup doesn't change.
Exactly.
And I'll just tell them that it changed.
No, that would be pretty difficult.
But then I'll know the break. Okay. All right, I just, I'm just checking, you know? Okay. Karen, you know, any questions for Paul?
No, I just think it looks great. So thank you for bringing that idea and all that you've already done to improve that area. Yeah, no, it's awesome. I don't golf, but I would go to the putt course because that looks.
Be fun.
Doable. Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're also looking at, you know, even with our food, if we can get it to, I don't know if you've been to Topgolf or to Popstroke and so forth. I mean, they're, yes, their amenities are amazing, but they're also, their food is very good. So we're looking to upgrade our food menu and make it a, you know, even if you don't play golf or putt, you can come out and, you know, be around the surroundings and have a nice environment and so forth and uh um have a bite to eat or have a beverage.
Good, good.
You know, we're looking to have a, a family atmosphere.
Great, great. Michael?
I'm the one who know what kind of brand of ice cream you're gonna have.
Or actually, it's a chocolate, uh Donna, you're gonna have to help me here. Chocolate shop. They're out of Madison, Wisconsin.
Okay.
Very good.
That sounds good.
Got that. Got your question answered, okay?
Uh, that's good stuff, yeah.
So um, do you have any demographics as far as how far you pull customers in in the surrounding area?
Uh, right now, we, we are pulling, I would say, a good thirty miles.
Hmm.
Yeah. I mean, right now, you, you've got a Topgolf twenty miles to the west and twenty miles in Ontario. And it seems like they put these up, we get busier. So I mean, yeah, the, the word is out there, and you know, the more that we improve the facility and so forth, I think it's just gonna get a little better.
You have room for a pickleball court?
Oh, we do not have room for a pickleball.
Last question I have, how long will it take you to complete the construction?
Uh, we are looking at if everything gets approved tonight, then right now we've got the building through our engineers. It's gotta get through the uh um city building, health department, so forth. We're hoping to break ground on the building probably October of this year, if everything goes according to schedule, and then we'd like to get through the winter rainy season and so forth, and then hopefully start the course March, April, and hopefully have it, everything ready by next year at this time. If everything is, I mean, everything would have to line up.
Okay, thank you.
That's our goal.
Appreciate that.
Great. David, anything?
Yes, please. A couple of questions. Do we have a projection on how much revenue we're talking about for the five-year deferment? What that might be?
Um, you're probably looking at, I would say somewhere around three hundred thousand, some give or take per year, I'm sorry, per year, per year.
Your investment.
What's that?
For you? I recognize.
We're in that, our investment, we're looking at anywhere from one to one point five million.
Yeah, I see that. Okay. Another question, while you're working to make things look aesthetic and it does look nice, what can we do with the driving range right now? You've got the intermediate section, pretty sad, and I suspect that's from water conservation, but are there any thoughts or plans to revitalize that appearance?
Well, actually, we are, we are doing that as we speak. Um, what, what, what was tough is, I mean, with COVID and with COVID and the golf industry, we just got so busy. And the range picker, believe it or not, is out there from six-thirty in the morning till roughly nine-thirty at night. And the grass just didn't sustain. So we actually started this year, we had, um, when was it? In April, we, we seeded a half acre, and we're looking to seed another half acre come September and gradually get that back into grass. Uh, we looked at um synthetic turf, but the uh, the cost and it just didn't pencil out. I mean, we're looking at four acres of turf. You're looking at a ten to fifteen-year lifespan. It just doesn't, you know, that's probably one point five to two million dollars just in turf. It just doesn't, just doesn't add up.
Yeah, I would. And that, okay. Uh, well, thank you, and I do appreciate the effort to try to revitalize.
Yeah, no, we're uh, you know, it, it's tough with the water restrictions and so forth, and uh, you know, we're doing our best, but believe me, we, we, we need grass out there just to save our range balls, save the equipment, just the health of the ball pickers with the dust and so forth. So yes, we do need to get grass back out there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. No other questions.
David, thank you. Anything else for Kelsey or for Paul? Thank you so, so much. We have a motion by Karen, a second by Gary. Please vote. And Madam Clerk, you can call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer? Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Friedenow?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Best of luck, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul, I have to ask now that we're done with business, are you familiar with the hundred-hole hike program?
I am not, I am not.
I'll be in touch.
I mean, I, I'm very uh familiar with first tee, but not, not that.
Okay. Yes, I'll, I'll reach out to you.
Please.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, temporary signs. Pastor Scranton, your prayer is answered. We're finally here. Okay. Uh, discussion of temporary signs continued from October tenth of two thousand and twenty-three. And Kathleen Sussman, our city clerk, is going to give us the update. Your staff report was very extensive and very good, so thank you for all of that.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Thompson, tonight we're here to continue the discussion on temporary signs and assess the feasibility of establishing temporary sign regulations, which include public signs within the city of Glendora. Um, temporary signs may play, uh, as, as you know, temporary signs play a critical role in such activities as elections, advertising um for, for sale homes. However, they can become very visually cluttered, cause safety hazard and disputes if left completely unregulated. Um, implementing temporary sign regulations in the public right-of-way is um a very complex endeavor, and it's even more complex in the private and residential areas. Um, tonight, we're gonna continue this con, our conversation and um go through a report. We're gonna discuss and provide a brief overview on the purpose. Our current sign codes, we're going to um break up a conversation between public property and private property as well as request um specific direction from council on various discussion points regarding temporary si- signage in both locations, and then give council direction, um options for next steps. As I previously, as I previously stated, um temporary signs, we're here to request um council consider the feasibility of changing the city's current temporary sign codes. Those codes were last um uh updated, I think, in nineteen eighties. There are various code sections that involve and regulate temporary signs. Most of them are found under chapter nineteen point twenty-four. Um, but we also have a, the zoning code, which is chapter twenty-one, that addresses temporary signs and permanent signage in the development area. So to start, we're gonna give you a brief overview of what exactly is a temporary sign. So per, according to Glendora Municipal Code, a temporary sign is intended to be used for a limited time, time period. As you will see, the characteristics of a temporary sign tend to be, they're versatile, they tend to be uh cost-effective, they tend to be easily installed or removed, and they tend to provide informational direction or um promotions for either events, political uh real estate, yard signs, and um sometimes they could even include uh various window signs. Um, the first area we're gonna discuss is going to be temporary uh temporary signs in the public right-of-way. Most temporary signs in the public right-of-way include parkways, medians, parks, um schools, utility, and even some public facilities. Currently, the city has limited rules regarding signage, especially in the public right-of-way. In fact, the only type of temporary sign was mentioned earlier today um and is considered a directional or wayfinding signs. The um staff report outlines the specific code regulations that are set for um signage in the public right-of-way, and it provides um some, also some samples from other cities of regulations that have been adopted that are more restrictive or less restrictive, depending on the direction council wants to go. So what makes uh temporary sign regulations so complicated? That would be this slide. Um, the legal compliance points that have to be addressed when dealing with temporary sign, whether it be in the public right-of-way or on private property. This point, these regulations before you are specifically related to legal compliance points associated with temporary signs in the public right-of-way. Um, council does have the ability to blanketly prohibit um signs, temporary signs in the public right-of-way. There's regulations in place that require us to um adopt regulations that are based upon time, place, and manner. The content needs to be neutral, non-discriminatory, and we need to ensure that safety and traffic concerns are addressed. Um, when, when, when we're talking about temporary signs in the public right-of-way, permitting ri- requirements can be um im- implemented or created. We also need to consider enforceability and compliance along with legal and regulatory compliance, zoning and land use regulations, along with the non-commercial versus the commercial speech. So with all those regulations in place, really, what is it? What is it that the city can actually regulate if they do want to develop additional um sign regulations in the public right-of-way? You will actually notice from this slide, there are quite a few different areas or components that the city could move forward with and restrict on how signs specifically temporary are placed and uh what they look like in the public right-of-way. As we previously discussed, council is, um, it is an option for council to prohibit the temporary signs within the public right-of-way. They can number the number of signs, size, height, shape, whether they're lit. Uh, location placement can also include required setbacks, um, and that could be from the sidewalk as well as overhanging. Um, content can be regulated, types, duration, and time as long, as well as a permitting and approval process. So there are two specific discussion points the council or that staff would like direction on from the city council tonight relating to temporary signs in the public right-of-way. The first question is, should the city council um expand the types of signs that the city currently allows on the public right-of-way, and if so, what types? To help facilitate this conversation, we've rep, we've provided you with a list of the most common temporary signs that are normally either found within the public right-of-way or regulated. You will notice that one of the um types of signs is highlighted green. That shows that is currently the only type of temporary sign allowed in the city of Glendora at this time under the current uh code. The second uh question. The second question we were, we're um requesting direction on is should the, the city remove all ability to post temporary signs on the public right-of-way, even wayfinding signs? Below you um and in this image are two examples of sign, signage that is utilized that falls within the city's current code and is the only um type of temporary signage allowed within the public right-of-way in the city of Glendora currently. The next area will, will be the conversation of temporary signs within residential or private property. Again, we'll have the compliance points. You'll see um as we've listed under here, there's several, three different components that, compliance points that were not listed under the compliance points associated with the public right-of-way. Under residential and private property, council also needs to consider constitutional considerations. Um, applicable, it needs to be applicable to all sign types, and there cannot be, it cannot be subject to a permitting process. Things that the c- city can regulate relating to residential and private property temporary signs is much more restrictive. You could regulate the number of signs, type, size, height, lighting, location, placement, duration, and time. It should be noticed that when trying to establish regulations um for private property, the courts are much more um strict and much more lean in the direction of the property owner, and that it is um best practice that everything be consistent across the board so you don't make exceptions by ti- um sign type. The content of the sign should not impact how and how it is placed and where it is and how it is regulated. In regard to residential and private property discussion points, we're gonna ask the city council to ex, if they would like to expand on the types uh allowed in residential and private property, and if so, again, what types? And then should we establish rules for temporary signage on residential and private property that are not already regulated? So the first question is very similar to the um shot, the screen we, slide we showed earlier, but this one is all the temporary signs that is normally found on residential or private property areas or that can be regulated. As you will see, there, the green, the bu, the boxes that are highlighted in green are already currently allowed um to be utilized within the city's current code. Um, informational and regulatory signs, permanent business signs, banners, and window signs are already currently allowed. Second question is, should the city establish the rules for temporary signs on private property that are not already regulated, and if yes, what specifically do you wanna regulate? Do you wanna regulate the duration of the time, location and place, illumination, height, size, and number? So with that information, we've developed four main options for council to consider tonight. The first option is to direct staff to address temporary signs in the public right-of-way. Second option is direct staff to address temporary signs in the private, even in a private property. Third option is direct staff to address temporary signs in the public right-of-way and on private property. And option four is take no action. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Again, excellent report. You put a lot of effort and work into this, a lot of examples. I know it's a regulatory landmine. Um, and so thank you very, very much for all of this and for responding to, I think, every question that we probably posed. With that, uh, Michael, I'll start with you this time.
Thank you, Mendo. Um, Kathleen, do and Adam, do we currently have a problem with temporary signs and signs in the public right-of-way?
Define problem.
Does it, does it take, does it take a lot of staff?
You know, I think anytime there's an election, there's signs in the right-of-way. I think the reason we're here this evening is it's on your your strategic plan because of council questions about rules that exist or don't exist previously. And I think when this body met in October, when we first provided the information, we all kind of sat back and kind of laughed a little bit that really the only signage that's allowed in in the public right-of-way was wayfinding signage. So not necessarily temporary signs, but wayfinding signs. And so uh, several of our signs have been around for a long time. And so the council direction was as questions came up about private property, uh, to go do some research and come back. So is there a huge concern with code enforcement and temporary signage or any signage in the right-of-way? Doesn't rise to the top of the list. Could it be problematic? Has it been problematic in the past? Sure. But under the, under the current rules, there's, there's no signage allowed in the right-of-way outside of wayfinding signage. So from that aspect, the answer, a more simple answer is no, but the more, I guess, convoluted is the answer is it depends and depends on the time of the year.
So I guess, I mean, this is, this is a, um, this is challenging with all the different options that we have, the different cities of what's legal, what's not legal. I'm not necessarily asking for a legal opinion necessarily, but they're listed on here. We had this discussion and briefing. So Danny, I'm kind of looking at you a little bit. Uh, Claremont, for example, they basically said you can't have any temporary signs in the public right-of-way or temporary signs on the public right-of-way. Is that legal to do so?
Yeah, that's legal. Yeah, you can, you can have a clear blanket prohibition on all signage in the public right-of-way.
Okay, because right now I believe we can only have two in two parts of the of the city right now.
Yeah, that that's different. This is wayfinding signage. And I I would, I would classify that not as as temporary, but as more signage in the right-of-way for our city.
Okay.
You do not have to permit any signage in the right-of-way.
Okay, so right now we don't allow any temporary signs in the, in the right-of-way?
No.
Okay. So um, also, there's like a wives' tale a long time ago, and we're still propagated about um, campaign signs ninety days before and and all that, but we don't have anything in writing for that. Have we, I I, I know that we really haven't had much of an issue with that. People are pretty good about taking them down. Uh, you know, after the election and things of that nature. Have you seen any of those issues pop up in the past that were problematic? Except for campaign signs in public right-of-way that get taken down by code enforcement?
Well, we recommend, so currently, one of our practices is to encourage um, candidates to not put up signage more than sixty days out, and then we request that they pick it up, the signage up within five days of the election. It is an encouraged um, uh, best practice. Um, it is not a requirement. Um, we have already started getting calls um, about political signs going up um, and inquiries about that. And we're definitely out of the sixty and ninety day range right now. So um, but I don't, I don't think it, I mean, we haven't been inundated with phone calls and I haven't seen anything.
One of the larger questions we'll get is, I don't like this sign. Is it in the right-of-way? And you know, old cities have old property lines. And so then staff's going out and sometimes you know, all right, you have to look at some records and this foot has twenty-five-foot right-of-way. So you need to move the sign to the front door on a corner lot type thing. So we get those types of nuisance calls sometimes, but since I've been here since twenty eighteen, actually, in twenty eighteen, we had some quite a bit of signage in the right-of-way, but that got picked up every morning. And we call the candidates and let them know their signs are in the clerk's office or the street yard. But usually after the third time of coming and picking up signs, it doesn't become an issue anymore.
I I'm, I'm not so in favor of regulating signs on private property. It, that's, that's a problem for me. Public property, well, that's, that's, I think we're pretty much covered right now with our sign ordinance with that. I just think some guidance for the uh, the folks running for different elected offices. And I don't know if we can, if we should mandate that as far as how much time or just since we don't really have a problem, why create a problem?
You, you need to be very careful, even in the, in the public, if you're going to talk about temporary signage, probably a blanket temporary signage timeline and what you can or can't do is advisable. The more specific you get, especially around political signs which people could say are just language and nature or a position point, you run into some challenges there.
But again, my first question was, do we have a problem? Doesn't like we have an issue.
It's like anything else, you don't have a problem until you do. So what I think this discussion is so important is it provides clarity and a recent look at kind of what, what is and what's allowed. And and what we ask of candidates may not be what they do, and that's their choice.
All right, that's enough for now. Thank you.
All right, Gary?
You sort of go through our codes right now. David's request to add another code enforcement officer, we're going to need a dozen if we try to enforce everything. It, it, it's funny when you, honestly, when you, when you go through and you see what we do as a community, we've just sort of accepted that things are okay until they're not. Um, so personally, I look at what we're doing. I think that as a community, we don't have any serious problems. So I, I don't see a reason to take any action at this point. But unless staff tells me otherwise, that we have a particular thing we need to address, I, I see no reason to do anything.
Okay, Karen?
Yeah, I would agree definitely in keeping the uh, directional wayfinding signs because I need to find my way to Grace Episcopal. So I want to leave that sign up. But can you pull up that one slide again, Kathleen, uh, that had, uh, yeah, that one. Whoop. So you're telling me the ones that are green are the only type that we currently allow?
On residential and private property, yes.
Because see, I'm kind of partial to uh, construction fence wraps because I think sometimes you can make ugly fences look so much better if you do the Disney approach of uh, having some cute scene or something.
So Jeff explained to me that that is actually part of a different code section. I've learned so much about temporary signs.
Yeah. So yeah, so tell me if if I want to make my construction fence look nicer, uh, can I do that right now? Or is this telling me I can't do that and it's got to look ugly?
Um, Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Jeff gave us this answer. So I'm going to say it depends, right, Jeff? Jeff, if they're doing a project, a fence wrap would be a, for example, a depiction of what the project may look like on a fence. You know, the
Never been asked that question by, usually they just put up what they want to illustrate the project. They don't come to us and ask what we, what's okay.
But the city could, if it wanted to, pass rules that clearly define what wraps could be allowed, for example.
But there, I don't, I'm not aware of a code that speaks to that.
Okay, just the reason I asked is just because of that slide up there. Looks like it's saying that they can't do that. So I just wanted to make sure that's not what we're saying. So it sounds like Jeffrey saying, oh, they can do it. All right.
Rules say we can't do it, but we don't care.
Also true.
Okay. But yeah, um, I think that adding anything else to the right-of-way and trying to define it would make uh, life miserable for everybody. Uh, so I think, yeah, keeping it with just the uh, directional and wave finding uh, signs for public right-of-way. Because then you get into, well, what about this group? And does it fall into that category or not? And yeah, it is just a nightmare. So yeah, I would agree with Mr. Boyer.
Thank you, Karen. David?
Hey, okay, thank you. Um, I clearly do not want to be known hours the wayfinding signs. Uh, I did not realize those are temporary. They look rather permanent and positive directive to me, so I would not want to touch that. I think that when you see placards stapled to power poles all up and down the thoroughfares, that's a problem. Power pole folks probably don't appreciate it either, but don't have time to deal with it. So I think we ought to have something that says that's not right. But then I'm really not in favor of making more rules that we have no means of complying with, so pretty guarded about adding more to that toolbox just to have it if we're, if we can't play, you know, we can't enforce it. I think that we also have to look at businesses if they have, I don't want to get into business signage, but if they have a building sign and a marquee out on the street, adding a bunch of temporary clutter signs in their driveway or their parking lot area, I'm not in favor of that. Can we, can we address that? How, how much more signage and clutter do they need to draw people in if they've got the building and the marquee done to code already? Is there, is that something we haven't answered perhaps?
On your strategic plan is, is a comprehensive sign code regulation and look and update. And I know it's one of those items that are, that's on the list of staff to get to. Um, that in and of itself, Mayor Pro Tem would be just an enforcement action. The city would have to look at all of the permitted signs that were in place and the various rules that apply to that business category. I think we've had several complaints. I think uh, we get calls, for example, on the yard sale establishment off of Grand Avenue. I, I think it's probably the most predominant one where there's temporary signage out front. And they've had several code enforcement issues. But again, that's one of those where you ask for a correction, it gets corrected, and then the process starts over again. So that's just more of an enforcement side of things. Um, I, as I, as I believe I, I understand that question.
Okay, no, that's, that's fair. Uh, you know, and then it's, what kind of teeth does the compliance have with it? And that's kind of tough, so. Yeah, I don't see making more rules and making it more complicated is good as a direction. I'll repeat, leave the wayfinding signs that are positive in our community, leave them alone. I think that's a completely different discussion. No discussion in my mind. Hang on a second. That, that would be all the, all the input I can share on that right now.
David, thank you. Uh, I'll make mine very brief. I uh, concur with the uh, motion that is been made by Gary and Karen, option four. I hope that we can really stress because I was, I think, one or maybe the only one, but one of the people that have a real um, frustration when it's election time and the clutter that uh, comes upon us. And it's just, sometimes it's over the top. So I really like the fact that sixty days is being stressed. And on the first, when you talk to people who may want to run, uh, if we can stress that, so September fifth would be that day. Uh, and, and hopefully we can please, you know, each other and get those signs down. So um.
Well, and, and just to confirm, it is just a, a.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a.
We can't.
It's a, it's a.
Strong recommendation.
Strong.
Common sense.
Recommendation, which I, which I agree with. So I definitely am in option four, so.
But Mayor, where isn't uh, the opening of the election process start ninety days out? To pull papers and things of that nature?
Ye- yes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so theoretically.
Two separate events in my mind. I mean, you can apply, but the signage can come.
And.
I think we had presidential signage four years before. So I mean, I, I don't, I think I think we need to have an honest conversation here about what we're talking about. So I mean, if someone wants to put, they support a candidate, wants to write something on their garage door. I mean,
Yeah.
that's going to happen. So and I think it's also one, one of the things that came up the last time and and Mayor, and I think you were just about to mention it is we got the question about signage and on private property and, and what if it's blocking a, a view of, of a car making a right-hand turn or near a school? And what do you do? And so you know, I'll let the chief out there correct me if I'm wrong, but if there was a safety issue regardless, and it's private property or public property, we're going to address that. So if you have a concern, call, call us and we're happy to walk you through that. So that goes without saying that if there is a public safety issue and a wide variety of issues, regardless of what rules we have, we're going to go out there and address that safety issue.
Right, right.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yes, David?
Regarding the election discussion, keep in mind a lot of the clutter we see, especially on Caltrans right-of-way is not local candidates of the city election that we control. It's greater elections than that. And I don't know how we address that.
And and Mayor Pro Tem, believe it or not, we're actually in contact with Caltrans and most frequently for us, flood control on a, on a regular basis when signage ends up there. So the flood control is really where we get more of the county and city large signage that then the county is responsible for taking down. Sometimes they have us do it for them, but more often times than not, they want to come take care of it themselves.
Yeah.
So Mayor Pro Tem, we are definitely in contact with Caltrans, yeah.
Okay, uh, motion's been made by Gary and Karen. Uh, please vote. And Madam Clerk, you'll call the oral rule call.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Friedenow?
I must ask, which option are we voting on, please?
Uh, option four, David, uh.
Take no action.
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, uh, we are down to the last item, item nine, which I called uh, an hour ago, maybe. First reading and introduction of a ordinance to amend chapter five dot four zero and chapter two dot one eight of the Glendora code and consideration of an MOU between, and my screen went out, uh, between the uh, chamber and the Glendora bid. And, and so that's what we're here for. And I'll, Alicia uh, is here to report. Thank you for a very good report. I know that the Chamber Board has uh, talked about this, and uh, you were there to give an excellent update. So now you're here to share, share with us. Pleasures.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, this evening, I will be discussing an MOU between the city and the Glendora Chamber of Commerce. In two thousand and nine, the Glendora Business Improvement District was established under the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of nineteen eighty-nine. Comprised of various businesses within the adopted boundaries, the bid's mission is to promote the physical and financial vitality of the Glendora Village. The bid has successfully executed this mission by contributing to the maintenance of the village as well as promoting and sponsoring annual events such as a Halloween Walk, Holiday Stroll, and Annual Wine and Beer Walk. Since its establishment, the city has provided a level of management and oversight over the bid's day-to-day operation and administration. The Glendora Chamber of Commerce is a California nonprofit organization that works with local businesses to improve the economic well-being and quality of life in the city of Glendora. An established partner of the city, the Chamber is a leading advocate for business growth and promotion in the community. The Chamber also has a large network of businesses within Glendora as well as surrounding cities. The Chamber holds a number of events through the year such as the State of the City, Cuisines of the Foothills, and the Flashback Car Show. Back in twenty twenty, the city transitioned to a multi-year strategic planning system. First, beginning with the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three strategic plan. Building off of the progress made in those years, the current twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five strategic plan is comprised of several objectives and tasks that the city staff is to complete in order to help the city reach its long-term strategic goals. Several of these tasks are related to the Glendora Village, one of which includes the changes to the city's administration of the bid. The first step of this effort is to amend the Glendora Municipal Code, specifically Section five point four zero point one one zero, delegation of administration, which would allow for a nonprofit organization to administer the bid. As well as Section two point one eight point zero five zero, appointment, which grants the bid advisory board the authority to recommend the board member appointments to the city council. which grants the Bid Advisory Board the authority to recommend the board member appointments to the City Council. The second step is to approve the proposed MOU assigning management and oversight of the bid to the Chamber. The proposed draft MOU includes a total of 21 sections that define the responsibilities of the Chamber and the city as it relates to this agreement. The full document is available on the city's website, but for the purpose of this presentation, I will go over in detail the more notable sections. The first is going to be the general provisions of the agreement. Second, the manager's responsibilities, the city's responsibilities, assessment advances, and reports and audits. Looking first at the general provisions of the MOU, should the City Council approve, the MOU will go into effect July 1st and will continue year after year unless one of the two parties wishes to terminate the agreement. The Bid Advisory Board and the Manager will work together to prepare an annual budget to recommend to City Council by January 31st of each year. As in years past, the budget shall continue to include revenue sources, assessment income, other revenue, planned activities, and other expenditures. Under this agreement, the city is to pay the manager up to $50,000 annually to perform the services in the MOU and assume responsibilities as outlined in the MOU. Assigned to the scope of work on behalf of the city is going to be the Community Development Director or his designee, and for the manager, the Chamber President and CEO or his designee. Moving on to the manager's responsibilities, the manager will be responsible for the administration of the bid, providing the following services. First, the general district management of the bid. The manager will be responsible for overseeing, coordinating, and performing necessary activities for the bid. This includes establishing objectives and metrics for strengthening and evaluating the bid, developing a strategy to promote bid businesses and the general Glendora Village area. They will also explore ways to further support bid, bid businesses as well as distribute and circulate information regarding activities, events, sponsorship, and marketing opportunities at least on a quarterly basis. They will also collect data that will help the manager measure the overall performance of the bid. The manager will be responsible for submitting the bid's annual plan along with the budget to the city by January 31st of each year. The manager will also establish and adopt a procurement policy within three months of the effective date of the MOU. The manager may choose to adopt the city's current policy or adopt its own so long that the bid funds are procured in a consistent manner throughout the year. Regarding public meetings, the manager will coordinate and facilitate the bid's public meetings moving forward, removing the city's city clerk from the public meeting process. The manager will be responsible for the proper posting of meetings and minutes, ensuring that all is in accordance with the Brown Act. The manager will, will maintain the bid's website to include the advisory board roster, to include the names and business associated with, uh, with the advisory board member, meeting agendas, board and committee meetings, I'm sorry, board and committee minutes, the bid's bylaws, as well as audits, reports, and financial statements of the bid. The manager will also contract any support services needed to carry out the activities in the bid's annual plan, paying for any direct out-of-pocket expenses that are necessary. Lastly, the manager will provide separate sales and marketing services specific to the bid so that it is not to be combined with the marketing efforts provided by the Chamber for the Chamber. Onto the city's responsibilities as outlined in the MOU. The city will act as a liaison to the manager and the administration of the bid responsible for the following. The city will continue to provide assessment and delinquency noticing to the bid businesses as well as the collection of assessments. Under this agreement, the city will authorize a monthly dispersment of collected funds to the manager each month during the term of the MOU. Within six months of the effective date, the city will coordinate and provide various trainings for the manager to ensure that those administering the bid are well-informed on regulations, policies, and laws provided by the state and the GMC. And lastly, the city will continue to notice and conduct the public hearings required for the adoption of the bid's annual plan by the state. Regarding assessment advances, the city will continue to collect assessment revenue through the city's contracted vendor, HDL. Disbursements are received monthly with amounts varying month to month. Once the monthly disbursement is received, the city will then disperse that amount to the manager. The city will disburse $50,000 of the bid's reserve funds within 30 days of the effective date of the MOU. The manager shall not collect assessment revenue directly from any bid business and must establish a separate account with the banking institution so that bid funds are separately accounted for. Should the manager fail to submit any of the required documents in the MOU, the city may stop dispersments until those documents are received and considered acceptable by the city. Bid funds will continue to only be expended on activities in the budget and annual plan per state law and the GMC. Expenditures that are not included in the budget will be considered an ineligible expenditure. Similar to how the bid is currently operated, the manager is to fully expend assessment revenue by the end of each fiscal year. Any unexpended assessment revenue should be programmed for the following fiscal year. And in the event the Chamber dissolves or decides to terminate the MOU, bid funds are to be returned to the city within 30 days. Each month, the manager will need to complete a monthly financial report reporting expenses, revenue, and fund balance of the bid. This reporting, this is reporting that the city is currently completing, so this would be reporting that the manager would, would then take over should the MOU be adopted. The MOU also requires that the manager submit an annual performance report within 90 days after each fiscal year, which will summarize all of the following activities performed by the managers. Seeing as this would be the first year of the MOU, information provided in this report is very important and vital to moving forward with each year of the MOU. By January 1st of each year, the manager is to submit the bid's draft budget, and by January 31st, the manager is to submit a final budget to the city for review. In addition, the manager will be required to complete an audit within 180 days after the end of each fiscal year. The auditing of the bid finances was previously and is previously overseen by the city, so that would be something that the manager would also be responsible for as well moving forward. Did want to mention, as the mayor mentioned as well, staff has discussed this MOU with Josina, the Chamber President, and has presented the MOU to the Chamber Board and Bid Advisory Board, both recommending approval to the City Council. Next steps include City Council's consideration of the proposed ordinance and MOU, amending two chapters of the GMC, and should the City Council approve tonight, the MOU will go into effect July 1st of this year. Staff will then work closely with the Chamber over the next six months to make sure that they're well, well-informed on the terms and provided the support needed for a smooth transition. So with that, staff does recommend, uh, to introduce for our first reading the ordinance to approve the MOU between the city and the Glendora Chamber of Commerce to authorize the city manager to execute the MOU, including making minor non-substantive changes and direct staff to work to implement the MOU, uh, to go into effect July 1st, 2024. So with that, I am available for any questions, and I do know that Josina is here too, if you have any questions for him. And with that, I will turn it over to the mayor and City Council for discussion.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You, uh, covered a lot of ground and did an excellent job. Your, uh, assessment of all of the specifics, uh, was, was just spot on. So thank you for, uh, for all of your work. I know that Valerie is back there. She's being very quiet, but she's been a part of this too. The presentation that you both made to the Chamber Board was, uh, received very, very well. And, uh, I think this is a excellent step for everyone. It's a, you know, win-win. And it does not mean that anybody's failed, but it helps us to take that next step on a lot of levels. And, uh, so very, very good. Thank you. With that, uh, Karen, do you want to start us off with any questions?
Josina, be careful what you ask for. I think that it would be my hope that with the investment of the $50,000 that soon that handoff happens, that for that $50,000 that the questions and expectations of city staff by the bid, by the community, by the council would minimize, that all of that would be shifted to the Chamber. That would be my expectation for that, uh, investment, that that lifts that weight off of yours and Valerie's shoulders and hands it off. So with that expectation, uh, I can support this, but, uh, that would be my hope that, uh, that responsibility would be passed on.
Great, thank you. Gary?
Yeah, do got a couple of questions. And let's not misunderstood. The report said that the annual payment will be distributed in, in one bulk amount. But the MOU talks about a monthly payment.
Correct. So I can, I can clarify that a little bit. So initially, we were thinking to go and make the initial dispersment the total reserve amount. But being that the effective date does coincide with the fiscal year end and also that we have invoices to pay, that's not possible to do all at once. So we did, uh, speak to Josina and discuss this with him. The $50,000 is an upfront amount is the first initial dispersment that will be made, and that should get them well through any of the first initial, um, bills or invoices that they need to pay uh, 30 days after that. So 60 days outside of the effective date will true up that amount and, and give us a second dispersment to include not only the assessment amount, but the remaining reserve amount. So we just don't have a final figure to give them complete, hand over their complete reserves, uh, for the initial dispersment.
I think we're talking about two different amounts. The ongoing payments plus the one-time payments. Can, can you sort of clarify how we would pay them ongoing versus sort of the one-time transactional payment?
So that's the initial dispersment ongoing. We do receive a monthly, uh, payment from HDL, so the collection of annual assessments. That varies month to month. So once we receive that number from HDL, we'll work with finance to go ahead and set up a date that we can go ahead and figure out that amount that we receive from HDL and disperse that accordingly to the Chamber. So they will receive it shortly after the city does.
And then how the $50,000 will work?
The $50,000 will be a initial dispersment that we'll make within 30 days, so before, uh, August. And then after that, we will work with finance to figure out the remaining reserve amount that is sitting in their bid fund and we'll disperse the rest at that time.
Okay.
That.
Maybe I'm not.
I, I think we're confusing two sep, two same amounts to, to some ones. There's a monthly invoice process for the services that we're talking about for Joe. Can, do you, do you mind just describing?
Sure.
So it's two $50,000 amounts. They're going to be handled differently and for different things. So I, I can understand the confusion on that front. So we're trying to get them the upfront money plus then the actual services that are provided.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying. That's why Adam's here. So the, the $50,000 that the city will be paying the Chamber will be paid out monthly, similar to their current agreement that they have with the city. So I believe that equates out to $4,100 in odd change. I'm not too sure. So we'll have them invoice the city and they'll be paid monthly.
Okay.
We'll, we'll set them up on direct deposit and we'll issue that separately from the bid's, uh, the bid's financial account.
Okay, just.
Hopefully that answers your question.
The other thing that I heard, maybe I misheard it. The, the $50,000 the city's contributing, does that have to be held in a different bank account? Than the bid assessments?
It, it, no, it, it doesn't need to be held in a separate legal bank account.
So the $50,000 for the services that the chamber is providing to administer the bid, that's their money. The initial $50,000 dispersment that we're going to do is separate bid money. That's because at June 30th, we won't have settled the whole year yet. So we need time to settle the entire bid funds, and then whatever the remaining balance is minus the 50,000 will remit to the Chamber. And that has to be in a separate fund. Did that clarify it for you?
I guess, do you understand this, Joe? Okay, that's all I need. Oh, okay. As, as long as we're all on the same page, I'm, I'm struggling.
And, and I think that, but the sole purpose of, if the bid comes back to Joe and says, hey, are you spending our money? What are you spending our money on? That's the assessments. That's handled through one bank account, correct, Joe? The money the city's paying the Chamber to administer is a separate bank account, so they can track that. It's strictly for transparency purposes.
Okay, as long, as long as everybody understands, it was confusing to me. Okay, appreciate it. Thanks, Lisa.
You know, we love fund accounting here. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna treat Joe the same way.
Michael?
Thank you, Alicia. Um, question along the lines of the $50,000. Presentation says up to $50,000. Is there qualifications to, for the Chamber to get the full 50,000?
So I think that's what, we did reach out to Joe and asked, we, we gave him the scope of work and we, we asked him what he felt he would need to go ahead and administer the bid. That's the number he presented. That's the number we're presenting tonight. Uh, I think also back to the annual performance report that I had mentioned. We're really going to see how many hours he's logging, his admin person is logging. It's not to exceed that amount. If that needs to be revisited at a later date, at a, a later year, that the modification clause is in the MOU, um, but for right now, we're proposing not to exceed $50,000 and we'll see what that looks like through this, this first initial year of the term.
So, uh, the Chamber then is going to have to provide a management, uh, schedule of their hours?
A performance report, yes. That's going to include their hours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So this year we'll get a, a pretty comprehensive look at what they're performing administratively for the events, for, for just, you know, general day-to-day. So that's something we're gonna, um, keep an eye on and, and kind of get a pulse on throughout this first year.
Can imagine that's going to be an accounting nightmare. Are you going to bill by the quarter hour? The other question I have is, um, mentioned about, uh, the marketing efforts have to be separate and apart from what the Chamber does, but there's economies of scale that the Chamber would get by combining the marketing, uh, efforts? How do you manage that?
So that's not explicitly stated in the MOU. Those are conversations that, that recommendations that Joe has had and, and I believe the Bid Advisory Board has expressed, you know, that they would like to keep it separate just to make sure that their assessment money is going towards, uh, their own marketing and promotion efforts. Um, I don't know if Joe would like to speak to that or.
Hello again. Um, I mean, the Chamber will keep promoting the villages like we do normally, but right now they have contractors that work on the, the, their so, social media event coordinator and stuff. I would like to keep that still in place because then it, it, just the way it looks through the whole city. So it's not like the city just hired us to just work at the, the village. So, uh, we'll work with those staff that's paid for with bid funds like they are now. And just, uh, so the bid businesses have those two people, people to go, go to and stuff too, but we'll just manage it.
So on the accounting side, do you have software specific to, to do the management side of the accounting of the hours spent?
We will, I will use my, uh, use QuickBooks, that type of thing, and I'll have a separate one, of course, you know, and everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Last question I have, I guess for Alicia is, um, are they going to hold the meetings here in chambers or over the Chamber?
So that's another thing I, I failed to mention during my presentation, so I apologize about that. But we, the city will go ahead and provide a city facility. They don't necessarily have to use, uh, the chambers or hold meetings from the dais. They can use the friend's room. Um, that's something we stopped to discuss with Joe, but we did mention that it may provide a more familiar and lax environment, maybe be more inviting to the membership to come and attend meetings. It's a little intimidating being, um, here in this room for some people. So we, we will offer up to provide a standing reservation for a city facility should, should they desire that.
Only required to have minutes? They don't have to be videotaped or anything of that nature?
To my knowledge, and Kathleen could correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe they need to be videoed. They do need to provide meeting minutes and an agenda and be available, uh, for public attendance.
That's correct. Great, thank you. So what questions I have?
Gary?
Got another question, something I, I was looking, I don't see at the collection enforcement of the bid dues. Is that going to continue to be a city responsibility or is that going to be transferred to the Chamber?
Correct. It'll still be a city responsibility. As we go through HDL and our collection efforts are through them, including delinquencies, we would work, they would work through us to work through HDL since our contract is with HDL.
We still have some statutory obligations as well that, on how it's assessed and collected.
Okay.
Uh, is David, did we lose him?
We did. He's having Wi-Fi issues. Um, Gary, um, we're trying to connect with them, but as of right now, we, we're having issues.
Okay, okay. Well, I, uh, support this. Great job. Uh, Joe, we have a lot of confidence in you and your team and the bid board and the bid team that you'll work with, that this will be, uh, done, done well. And I support what Karen, Karen said. So, um, this is a good day. So thank you. Uh, please, please vote. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the, uh, roll?
Of course. Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, um. Just before we wrap up, uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, everybody has a very safe and happy fourth and celebrate the freedoms. Uh, which we all have and, uh, the city that we, that we love. We will meet again on July the ninth. That will be the last time that we meet, uh, for about a month and a half. So, uh, want to make sure that the public knows that. And last but not least, uh, we're going to close tonight in the honor of Chris Perkas. Um. Wes and Chris are, uh, dear, dear friends to a lot of us. And, um, we miss Chris and, uh. Uh, happy for, uh, the life that she had here. And for the enrichment that she gave to, uh, each of us. So we want to honor her by, you know, do, doing that. Uh, with that, uh, anything else from the council? Michael, Gary? Karen, uh, David is not there. Adam? Danny? All right, with that, uh, we are adjourned at nine twenty-seven.